Good afternoon. We call the meeting of every kind of board of commissions to order, Mr. Moses has a medium in properly advertised.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Will you be so kind, sir, to come lead us in our prayer? Now, listen, Mr. Murray's not here.
Who is taking care of him, sir?
You got, you have one?
We'll, we'll take care of him.
Do, do the pledge for us?
Yes, sir.
Let us all stand, please, for the prayer first, and then else, you're gonna designate a, and volunteer somebody to do the pledge allegiance.
That young fellow?
Group of talented young people.
Right here, okay.
Hey.
No, no, just a minute.
Are you gonna change up? Gonna give him a break?
This is our new president of, uh, who's president? Daisy, okay, okay. All right, we're gonna do a prayer and then we'll let you lead, okay?
The pledge?
Yes, let me, let's pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this beautiful day and your bountiful blessings. Uh, we thank you for this weather, and Father God, we pray right now that you would give this deliberative body the wisdom and understanding and knowledge they need to transact the business of the community. We pray that you put a shield or protection around them, and Father God, we pray for these young people, Father God, that while they're in school, we pray that you'll watch over them and protect them from all hurt, harm, and danger. These know the other blessings we have in Jesus' name, and everybody said, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please tell us who that young lady is, please, sir, so we'll, we'll know her name. Madam Vice President? Thank you, Mad. Mr. Murray, you're just in time, sir, let's move. We're trying to get in and get out today, so if you'll come on with your presentation. Good to see you.
All right, if we could have all the, um, the U commissioners that come up, come up here, forefront, center, so we can go ahead and swear it in.
Let me, let's see, is it best if I come down to do it? Mike, am I good from here as far as the TV angle? It's good? Okay. All right, I think I will stand, okay. Um, Mr. Murray, give me, give me thirty seconds worth of what we're doing here today for the audience.
All right, so we're, um, we're getting ready to swear in our U commissioners, um, you know, in the past, we've been doing this for about six years now, and, um, each year, it, it grows each year, uh, we have all of these young people here with us today, um, they join, they, they join us, they're excited about it, we have, we just elected officers, and I'll go ahead and introduce them now, um, as the officers. We do have our vice president here, Ms. Addie Norton. Come on, Addie, wave at 'em, do something, wave at 'em, this is our vice president, y'all clap it up for our vice president. And then we have our president, uh, I believe she is, there she goes, there, there she goes, we have Ms. Daisy Keller, y'all clap it up for Ms. Daisy. And they had to do speeches, y'all, they had to really come in here and convince their peers that they were the right person for the, uh, for, uh, right person for the job, uh, they did a phenomenal job. We do have our treasurer here, who is our, where's our treasurer at? Treasurer? She's not here, the treasurer's not here, uh, we have our historian, where's our historian at? Okay, we have Ms., um, uh, McKenzie, she's our historian, so she's responsible for taking pictures and getting content. Right now, she can't take pictures right now because obviously she's right here. Um, we have our secretary, Ms. Mahi Patel, uh, she's the one that keeps notes of all our meetings, she's al- always keeping us organized, and she's a great communicator, y'all, y'all understand that when we do things, uh, communication is key, so shout out to Mahi for keeping us all together. Mahi, raise your hand so they can see who you are. Yes. Who am I missing? I believe we got our, um, we got our parliament, but I don't think she's here, she's not here. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, Samari Torres, this is our parliament right here, so she's, uh, responsible for making sure that we follow the laws and the bylaws, um, keeping us, keeping us tight, and then we do have Sanaya, which is our, so, so, oh, Sanaya's, okay, so, so she didn't, she's not an officer this time, but it's okay. All right, so these are our youth right here, y'all, so y'all clap it up for them as they get ready to swear in.
You're gonna man record, Mr. Murray, that's your parliamentarian.
Parliamentarian, yes, sir.
Parliamentarian, yeah. All right, young people, I'm, I'm gonna say aye, then each one you're gonna say your name, let's start here, everybody says their name individually, we're going all over your room, okay? I say aye, then you start your name, next person, got it? We clear? All right. Aye.
[inaudible]
And for the rest of the oath, we're gonna use our outside voices so that people can hear you as well as those who are at home. All right, you ready? Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support
That I will support.
uphold
Uphold.
and defend the Constitution
And defend the Constitution.
of the United States of America
Of the United States of America.
and the laws thereof
And the laws thereof.
that I will support
That I will support.
uphold and defend
Uphold and defend.
the Constitution
Constitution.
and laws
And laws.
of the state of Georgia
Of the state of Georgia.
not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
that I will observe
That I will observe.
and obey the laws
And obey the laws.
and ordinances
And ordinances.
of Liberty County, Georgia
Of Liberty County, Georgia.
that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully.
perform and discharge
Perform and discharge.
the duties incumbent
The duties incumbent.
upon me
Upon me.
as a member
As a member.
of the Liberty County Youth Commission
Of the Liberty County Youth Commission.
fairly
Fairly.
honestly
Honestly.
and to the best
And to the best.
of my skill
Of my skill.
and my ability
And my ability.
so help me God
So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, your Liberty County Youth Commission. Now, uh, let's see, Kodak moment, how are we gonna do an easy Kodak moment? Is it easier for them to move or us to move?
Y'all to move.
That's the move, all right.
Let them stay right where we at, and we line up right.
Oh, line up high, okay. Patrick, how have you been? They need to double up?
Yeah, let's move this back a little bit, Kim and Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Parents, are you good? Kim, you good?
All right.
All right.
One more time. Thanks so much, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, y'all, y'all have a great day.
They are stepping down, and Mr. Richardson is stepping up. And folk, you're welcome to stay, I certainly can be excused, I'm not sure what instructions Mr. Murray has given you, but if you want to sit around just for permission to hear what we do, that's fine, otherwise, we will certainly excuse you. We know this is an additional part of your school day.
Good afternoon, Chairman Lovett, members of the commission.
Hello, sir.
Um, as y'all know, we've been working on this, uh, this joint comprehensive plan with the seven cities for the last couple of years, you've been to our meetings, you've, uh, conducted public hearings, uh, we, I put this in, this, this final draft copy in each of your hands back in the month of July, subsequently, we sent it to the state of Georgia Department of Community Affairs, they blessed it, it's ready for adoption, I've taken it to, I've now taken it to six of the cities, and I'm bringing it to you tonight, and I'll take it to Walthaiville next week, and then we'll be, we'll be completed with this for another ten years, so I would ask you to consider adopting the, uh, the joint Liberty County Comprehensive Plan this evening.
And there have been no changes since your last presentation?
DCA did have some minor edits, some clarifications in the work programs for, for the cities, and they also asked to put some labels on some of the maps, but nothing, no material changes.
Okay, all right, commissioners, it's been forced to approve the, uh, joint comprehensive plan for the next ten years.
Next ten years.
Some of them won't be here when it's come back again. Yeah, all right, Chair and Attorney, motion?
I'm making a motion, we accept it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, we approve the resolution regarding the 2025 Liberty County Joint Comprehensive Plan. Thank you so much for your diligence, sir, we're making the rounds around Liberty County and coming back again, you go to Walthaiville and win, is that?
Tuesday, Tuesday evening.
All right, okay, so just let us know how that goes through.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Uh, any opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, this is on our website at thelcpc.org, if anybody in, in Liberty County wants to look at it, you can look at it in its entirety and blow it, blow it up for clarity.
All right, thank you, sir, once again, thank you very diligently. Moving right on, finance, Ms. Richardson.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to report on the county's July 2025 financials, um, this is our first month of the fiscal year 2026. Um, for the general fund through July, we've only collected three percent of budgeted revenues, um, but also we've only spent about eight percent, um, this is pretty, uh, expected for being this early into the fiscal year. Um, we are, for a number of months in fund balance, we're sitting at four point seven months, and this time last year, it was four point oh, so we're a little, um, ahead of last year as far as, um, for our fund balance. Uh, the departmental expenditures, this, this is the same thing I report every year for July, but there's, there's a few that are, uh, running ahead of schedule that are certainly, um, attributed to contract renewals, um, the biggest one, uh, is IT, but that is every year, and some of those are required to be paid a hundred percent upfront in July. Um, the, there are other ones, um, let's see what else, the jail act, um, actually has some health insurance, um, that was paid in July for their inmates, so I'll have to, uh, make sure that that kind of reverses itself or, or resets itself, um, because I wasn't made aware of any, uh, increases for that, but I'm gonna look into that one. Uh, nine one one, same thing as IT, um, for nine one one, they pay their Motorola contract in July, so they are showing, um, ahead of schedule for this month, um, but overall, there's nothing that really stands out or, you know, isn't expected at this point in the fiscal year. Um, solid waste, we have, let's see, collected seven point three percent of revenue, um, and one divided by twelve is eight point three, so we're, we're almost on track for a full month of revenue. For expenditures, we're behind, as in like, have spent less than I would expect, um, which does create a revenue over expenditures of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, um, for July. Let's see, um, there are currently no departments in solid waste exceeding budget, and that just looks like as a fund as a whole, um, they, you know, the expenditures are down for, uh, July, and the special revenue funds, um, I hit on this a second ago, but nine one one is the only one, uh, Fund 215 that is showing, uh, a variance for the month of July, and it was for that Motorola contract, um, that we pay every year. Uh, sales tax reports, this is excellent news, but for sales tax seven, we collected one point two million, one point, one hundred, one million, two hundred and three thousand, um, for the month of July, which is, I did look, and it's our third highest month since this, uh, SPOLOST began, um, but it's, it's excellent, people are out there spending money and we're collecting it and so forth, um, and for SPOLOST seven, we have spent, it looks like eighteen point eight million through July, um, our projects are moving along, and, um, so yes, that's a good thing as well. Our projects are moving along, and so yes, that's a good thing as well. For T-SPOS, we collected 1.1 million, 1,129,000. It is always a little less than our sales tax seven, because it's, the taxable basis is slightly different for T-SPOS, but it's another great month, and since T-SPOS began, we have collected 56.5 million, which certainly has exceeded our original estimates and expectations, and we have two more months of collections under T-SPOS. And hopefully, we can renew it in November, but, yes. But July is pretty short and sweet, unless you guys have any questions for me specifically?
Got one.
Yes, sir.
Is our, our sister city, are they up to date with us?
For solid waste, last time I checked, which was pretty recent, it was, the balance was 23,000 and some change, so I would say no, sir. I don't remember seeing anything in the last week or so since I looked at that balance, but I could certainly check with, with Amy and double check, but 23,000.
Mr. Chair, I was told that there would be a payment made this Friday on that bill.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right. One of you all remind me, with SPOS, funds come to the county and we disseminated the funds to.
Yes, sir, there are five of these seven entities that we write checks out to you every single month by, I think we have until the 15th, but for finance, it's the ninth of the month. We distribute the SPOS and T-SPOS funds by the night. There are two smaller cities, and I don't wanna get them wrong, but I know Allenhurst, but two tiny ones that, when they do identify a project, there's, there's slices, it's just so little, but yes, sir. But yes, we do distribute those ones.
So I know we're in the first month of the new year.
Yes, ma'am.
Fiscal year.
The fiscal year, but are we still looking at revenue and expenses from last month, last year?
When we close out the books, that's what you want to do.
Oh, we are in the middle of that, I think I had mentioned previously, but we have to wait, finance has to wait until August 31st to do our deferrals and accruals on the revenue side. That's a state law, so we are freshly past that, and so we're actively closing out June. But yes, ma'am, I will, uh, once we have the full, you know, once we have completely closed out June, then I will bring back the information to you all on what, where we stand, finally, for the fiscal year. But our audit does start October 20th, so it will be absolutely completed before then, so, yes, ma'am, we're actively working on it.
So state law tells you when you have to close out?
For, uh, for revenues, there's a 60-day accrual period because, I mean, if we collect it in October, but it belongs to June, it's, it's not, we didn't have the benefit of that cash in a reasonable amount of time after year end, so we have to cut off at August 31st. There's some exceptions to that, like sporadic federal grants that might not matter when we get the money, because it was, it has a different kind of background, but for charges for services and those kind of things, then absolutely.
I wonder is that only?
Property taxes.
Now, the one, so we gotta leave it seven. Is, is that only for county governments, I wonder, is that, that law?
Oh, no, 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 sir. But I think you can elect, or, I think you just have to like, set the expectations and then have it documented in your financial statements footnotes and, but that more or less is what the state recommends for governments.
And that's what we follow, please.
Mr. Chair, let me ask this question now. Due to the, what happened in the east end of the county, when are we going to look at reallocating those funds from the interstate paper road?
Well, I, I don't know, we really hadn't talked about it anymore than they, they can now be reallocated. I, I think every thing is finalized as far as, I, I certainly recommend, October the what is it? It's supposed to be their, their close the door day, October the what?
September.
It's a, it's pretty well a done deal, there's no sense in us beating around the bushes with it.
On the machine down.
Yeah.
The bowler, they, yeah, they took the bowler out.
Yeah, so, there's no sense in us beating the bushes around it, we might as well go ahead and, go ahead and reallocate it to some things that I, that I was asking about prior to that, to relocate those funds. So we need to take a look at that soon.
We will, okay, all right. While I was thinking October something was there, I know they had a September day, but I thought October the whatever, whether.
Everything is.
Yeah.
It's, it's like a, it's, I don't even wanna get in the paper, yeah, well, there's still there, it's, it's, there's other stuff than just making a paper.
Okay.
Like all the, all the liquor.
All right.
I'm, I'm past.
We got it, thank you, Mr. Matthew.
Thank you.
Is Trent hiding around that corner? There he is. Are you?
I got you on my radar.
No, I'm standing behind yours too. How's everyone this evening?
Good, how are you, Trent?
Good, I wanna talk to you a couple of things tonight, the Half Moon Pier. Couple of things I wanna talk to you about on it, there is a Georgia Trails grant that's available that we can apply up to $3 million, that that park would fall under. So that's, the pre-application for that is due in November. So what we'll do at the next meeting is try to bring you a couple of layouts. We've got a layout on the, that you guys have seen before, and we're gonna put together a preliminary engineering report and put together, get together so we can go ahead and apply for a grant, but what we'll need is you guys to vote to do that in the October meeting. That way we can apply for that. As part of that, the Half Moon Pier, when we bought that years ago, was like four different lots with like a right of way through the middle of it, so if you look at tax map, it doesn't look like our piece of property. One of the things we're gonna need to do as part of this pier that we're trying to permit, because we got a CNPA permit for the pier, and with the coastal resources now, we need to recombine that into one plot and one piece of property instead of all the individual parcels. We've generated a plat on that, I'll circulate it through Mr. Mosley, and we'll get it where we can record that and put that all into one, because there'll be some things that we'll need to get the county attorney to do to legally put it in one piece of property. That'll make it cleaner for us as far as permitting goes, it'll make it cleaner for us as far as requesting grants and trying to get some funds to build something out there at Half Moon. It's one on Callahammock.
Did I see that in your report, sir?
Very first one.
Yeah, Commissioners, I'm thinking, he just wants to have our approval to combine one, two, four lots, right?
Four lots.
Four parcels into one, so that we could proceed with this project, does anyone need to hold that up?
Okay.
Hey, I don't think so.
I'll just, I'll go ahead and pack, once I get it done, I'll.
We ready now?
Yes, sir.
We give you permission now to go ahead, if that's okay?
I'll send it through Joseph, and I gotta get Kelly to draw up the, the paperwork that goes with it.
All right, so, so let's, let's both give you permission to move forward with combining the four lots into one, yes, sir.
Perfect.
Make a motion, we give him permission.
Second, please.
Second, all right. Any further discussion, all in favor, show your hands, please, we don't wanna, let's, let's move on.
Perfect, all right, Jones Creek Pavilion.
Mr. Mosley, I give you enough time to.
This is now called Susan King Taylor Freedom Park. We go back and forth, sometimes I'll say Jones Creek, sometimes, and, and, you know, we're trying to get it all together. So there are several great things going on with this. We've kinda looked at some different, not different layouts, but things that we're trying to do for this particular park and having a master plan, and so what we have before us here is a master plan, and I'm gonna build to several things, and try to keep reading about this version going. But we got walking trail going around it, we got the pavilion that's under construction, we got parking that's under construction, we got a, a future walking trail through the wetlands, kinda like a wetlands interpretive center, and then a fishing pier with a kayak launch that we would try to get out to the creek. We'd have a memorial to Susan King Taylor, and then maybe an outdoor amphitheater kind of thing, either here or over here. You know, that's not really, the exact location of it is not important right now. We're trying to talk about moving things around and putting it in different locations, but got several things going on here. We're, we were able to talk to Georgia Power, and they have a foundation, and so we sent them a letter requesting funds, and they, I got a phone call today that they're gonna put us into their foundation for a $25,000 grant. So we're likely to get $25,000 from Georgia Power on that, that'll go through.
Liberty County Historical Society.
There we go. Thank you, I couldn't say it. So excited about that.
Good news, good news.
We also have a, another grant opportunity through the Department of Natural Resources, which is the Outstore Stewardship Program that we can put in for up to $3 million. Now, what we're trying to do is write in a preliminary engineering report, and it closes the first part of October, so I need to go ahead and put the preliminary engineering, put the pre-application in for this one. We're gonna put in for the walking trails through here is number one, and the fishing pier is number two. As part of that, this walking trail, it's an elevated platform all the way through. So our estimates on it right now are 1.4 million dollars to, to build that through the wetlands. That number varies greatly depending on exactly where we put it. You know, we could, if we have to pull that number in, we can shorten up the trail a little bit. Just the way we have it drawn now is meandering through the woods, a, a nice long walk through the trails. And then this pier is, now it's a fishing pier with a kayak launch. It's not intended to be like a boat tie-up or a whole bunch of other stuff like that. That's about 1.3 million dollars worth. So what we would have to do is apply for the grant with these two projects, we'd be up 2.7 million dollars. We'd end up putting in 30%, the minimum requirement is 25%. If we go to 30%, we score much better. So what I'd like to do with the 2.7, 30% out of our funds, apply for a preliminary pre-application. And basically, what the pre-application does is says, you go through and you're competing with others to see whether you meet the requirements of what the grant's for before you write your real grant. So what I would need from the Board of Commissioners is a vote of support, and then that would follow up with a letter from the chairman that's supporting this project, if you guys are willing to apply for the money to get that.
So, you want permission to apply for a grant to help fund some of the improvements?
Yes, sir, that's exactly what I'm asking for.
Did you say exactly how much the grant would be for, did I miss that?
It could be up to $3 million per project.
Per project, wow.
Did I, I'm sorry.
And I'm saying we should put in 30% match from us.
That would be my funds.
Which would give us a better score.
That would give us a better score.
Where would that 30% come out?
Me.
Oh, out of your, okay, out of your, okay.
So, but if everybody is in support of it, I'd like to go ahead and get that established tonight, so we can go ahead and write that letter and make this application.
I mean, okay.
Well, yeah, Trent has mentioned grants twice, who, who would handle that for us?
He is.
He would do it.
Yeah, we got him, and we could do it, the, the administr, the grant administration side can do with Joseph and the county staff, and we just do the engineering side.
Oh, okay.
These don't have, these are not like the DCA grants where you have to have a grant administrator, so they're a little bit different.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I make that motion that we.
Second, motion is second, we give this gentleman the green light to make these grant applications. Optimistic they're coming through. Any further discussion, all in favor, show your hands, please. And then Trent, you know, once we're done with this, I hope, yeah, it's an annual grant, we'll be able to use them at another. I know you're gonna use grant application for Callahammock.
Yes, sir. So I'm, I'm trying to get money out.
Yes.
Everywhere I get money, I'm trying to get money.
Let's not leave it on the table.
Yes, sir, try to get money. If I don't ask, I don't get it.
That's right.
So, um, one other thing on the Susan King Taylor Park is we did take proposal or bids today for the walking trail, which is the walking trail, which is this one around the perimeter right here. And then it's got the little brick pavers and all here so that we could turn a boat around or something if we need to. All that was right at $266,000 for what we were trying to do with this. Our budget was 244, so it came in at 266. What I'm, I'm not, that just came in today, we haven't evaluated the bids, we wanna look at it. I wanna get with the chairman, make sure we have money assigned, money to do this before I make, ask you guys to take any kind of action, this is just to tell you, we took them, that's about where it came in. And the contractor that was the apparent low bidder is one of the, is a good contractor for this kind of job. Because there's gonna, as we build this thing, we're gonna have to maneuver it around those trees, and there'll be a lot of field changes, and so we have to have somebody that can think on their feet and move that sidewalk around.
Chair.
So.
I've received several calls about the boat ramp being used. Is there anything on this drawing showing where that you could, someone used parking a boat trailer?
Yes, sir, what, what we've done, we've got the, the curb that's gonna be in there, it's gonna be a rollover curb, so they can do that. So we've got it set up where, now, your big boats can't come in and turn around, but the smaller boats, like what Randy Buck drives out there, they'll be able to come in and they'll, with this, they'll be able to turn around right here, and then we've got it set up where they can pull off right here and park the trailer.
Okay. We were very careful to go back and plan for the boat, so they would still have access. Because you know, some, not a lot, but.
Not a lot.
But a few people from Hawaii use that, you know, so.
Yeah, there's only a few hours during the day that you can get in and out.
Yeah, so, so we had to really decide whether, but we decided, since they had been used to doing it, to continue to accommodate them, so.
Yes, but we did have a conversation about that, so we do have some places for it to, but it's not like a formal park and trailer here, I got spaces for it. Okay, I think that's all about those parks today. I'll go ahead and skip to the pickleball court since we're talking about parks. They're finishing up, striping, the re-stripe on the pickleball court today. They're supposed to be cleaning up, there's a grand opening for it tomorrow, it should look good for tomorrow. So as soon as I leave here, that's where I gotta go to make sure it's being cleaned up.
I was there, uh, when was that, Tuesday?
Yep.
Tuesday.
Yeah, they were just starting to use it.
Yeah.
It's done, I was out there at 3 o'clock today, and we talked about everything they needed to clean up, and they assured me they're gonna have it, and I told them I'd be back at 6:30, so.
Okay.
They're out there doing it. Sunshine Lake Road, we're gonna rebid that end of October, I got a bid date, it'll be, it should have been in the paper already. Bacon Town Road, still waiting on that pole to get moved. We are trying to push for that pole to get finished up and get gone, so we're trying to push on that, just, don't mean to punt at this, but it's low on the totem pole to move it, but we're trying to get it moved. We have some more plans that are due with the roundabout for Barrington Ferry that I'm trying to get done by the 30th of this month. We talked about the pickleball court. We have talked to our striping contractor, because he's still in his window, but he's halfway through his window, and we're writing him a letter just saying, okay, your time for your contract is getting closer to the ends, that way you don't get caught unaware that you're not finished with your contract.
Has he started, in what area is he in?
So he, his contract goes from July 21st to November 18th.
Right, has he, has he started striping in Liberty County? I didn't, okay, I haven't seen.
No, when we talked to him earlier this week, they said they were having trouble finding somebody to clear the edges of the rope. We make an incumbent on them to clean the edges, so they don't, you know, paint over a possum or something on the side of the rope.
And they will, if you keep you on on the, paint over the grass that's growing up.
Say it ain't so.
Yeah, we've had that, we've had that happen in the past. We've had a variety of things happen in the past on those striping contracts, so, but we are, we are following, and I don't want you to think that nothing's going on, we're kinda trying to push them. West of the Railroad, he just has McIntosh Lake Road and a few small things to get knocked out, and he should finish that one up. Live Oak Drive, we got a bid date for October 28th, and I did talk to Ms. Nelson for you, so I got her covered for right now. Pecan Lane Water System, the bidder on that is Griffin Contracting with a price of 166,900, 166,951 cents, that's corrected. They did have a, a mistake in their bid on their mobilization, which actually lowered their price. We did discuss it, and we have found some money to be able to. We did discuss it, and we have found some money to be able to make that project go through, and I just need you guys to vote to go ahead and, uh, move forward with that contract to, with Griffin Contract.
When do you need that? Is there okay to go on that project?
I don't understand you.
When do you need the okay to start that project? Now?
I'd like it today, please. Yeah, we kinda, we have kicked this one down the road a little bit. And I didn't wanna bring, didn't wanna ask you until we found some money, and we kinda found some dollars to do it.
Chairman.
Yes, sir. You know me.
Can I make a motion that we grant the engineer, uh, go ahead and start the project on Pecan Lane with the water?
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the, uh, bid of...
Hold on. Make sure we do the contract for a hundred sixty-six thousand ninety-five dollars and fifty-one cents plus a ten percent contingency.
Right. With the added cost that he mentioned.
Yes, sir. Sorry. I didn't want us to have that wrong.
Well, I had the one sixty-six. I didn't have the contingency. I should have remembered that. Alright, so that's your motion, Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
One sixty-six, oh nine, five fifty-one, plus ten percent contingency.
Right.
And I heard a second, didn't I?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gilley.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. You found the funding, you said, y'all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rich.
The only one last thing that I have, and I'll, I'll stop talking, is on Mary Todd Lane. I ain't gotten it anymore since you've been in the office.
Okay, so, what are we gonna do?
I don't know the answer to that question. I think probably next week, you and I need to sit down and talk about what we wanna do.
Okay.
What percentage, how many?
We don't even have half yet.
Not half. Almost half.
Almost half, but not half. Then we have one wrong end of the project.
Yeah. Us three, get together and let's talk about it. Okay.
Is, is there presumptive plan B on, no, I'm just asking, y'all like to work out something, uh...
There, there are several that are, I'm not gonna give. There's some that just won't respond. And then there've been several that are ready for the project. So...
Okay, let us know.
Okay, that's all I have tonight.
Yeah, that's a full payment.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Trent, um, did you, um, talk with Mayor Willis from, um, Allenhurst in the last couple of weeks?
He sent me an email.
Okay, about a road...
Wednesday, Wednesday.
Road project, yeah.
Yes, sir. And I've gotta get with him on Wednesday. I gotta, I've gotta make a meeting to go see him.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if I'll be able to go down there with you, but if, if you would, um, just keep me in the loop. I'm, I saw him, and I told him that I wanted to help him with a project.
Yes, sir.
And, um, so that's, you know, just see what the cost is, and, um, this is it here?
No, that's Homestown Road. You'd asked me for it, and I forgot to give it to you before the meeting.
Homestown Road, that's, um...
Go ahead, go, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, that's Marin.
Go ahead, give it to him.
Marin is the Homestown, um...
Or you asked me for it. You thought you asked me for it.
I thought Gary was gonna go ahead and pay for it again.
No, no, he, he got, he got every, he got every bit of Homestown.
We have made a habit of paying for District One jobs out of District Five.
I'm, I'm out of Homestown now, I'm sorry. All on him. But, but if, um...
For some reason, I had it in my mind.
In the old days, you went back. You had a, you had a moment.
I'm losing my mind.
But, um, on, on the same, with, with, uh, Mayor Willis, just, you know, once y'all talking, um, was it, um, which road was it? Was it, um, Hall?
But we have Hall Road, and we've got some sidewalk projects down eighty-four that he wants to do. And he'd looked at some stuff on Denver, on Dunlevy Road, but I don't think that we're trying to get into much on Dunlevy Road.
I told him I'd help him with one of them. Now, I'm not his rich uncle, but I, I'll, um, I, I'm gonna help him on, on one of them. I'll, uh...
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
Yes, sir. Yeah, he, we mentioned several in our, in the emails, so, but yes, sir, I've gotta set up a time.
He said you had a, a cost for, for one of those roads already.
I do.
Okay.
I do.
Trent. Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, oh.
I'll get away.
Bacon Town Road, where we at?
Say that.
Bacon Town Road, the paving?
Yes, sir. Um, waiting on Georgia Power. We've got that one pole that, that hadn't moved yet. So, we've kinda been pushing on that one pole.
That's putting us already a month behind?
Yes, sir.
Uh, putting them behind, behind a month?
They're behind a month. They've already, the, the, they've staked it. They're ready to go.
Right.
But where we've got to go, our first thing in our path is to get that pole out of the way, so they can put their drainage pipe in.
Alright.
So...
Alright. Two moments. Chairman, where's my signs for the fire station on eighty-four?
Your sign?
I call it my sign, whatever you wanna call it.
DOT said they were gonna put those in for us.
That's what you told us.
So...
They didn't say when though, did they? Or did they?
I will call and see where that sign is.
Alright. What's the status on the fence at the fire station going around the holding pond?
The fence, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm really having a hard time hearing you.
The fence going around the holding pond.
Okay.
By the fire station.
I, that's not on my radar screen to get a fence around the holding pond.
Chairman, that's something that we need to look at, because we've got the pavement right across the street. And all it takes is for a ball to roll over there in that pond, and some kid go try to, try to retrieve that ball.
Yeah, and it's, it's, whatever water's holding in it is really kinda shallow, but it wouldn't hurt to put a fence around it. We can certainly do that. I can get a price to get a fence around it.
Now, one other thing, we had all this rain the other day. Didn't we do something about, uh, drainage study a cou- couple of years ago for the county?
We did in two thousand two.
Nothing since then? Seems like in two thousand and two.
Well, we need to take a serious look at it.
Yes, sir. So, you know, we, we have, uh, you and I met at, uh, Curran's Island about several things. We've done the surveying to, to, uh, try to help look around, uh, the entrance to, uh, Half Moon Plantation.
Right.
Also around Eve Park. All that field work has been done.
Right.
And we're in the process of trying to design a fix, cause we're gonna have to have some easements. And, uh, I've been in contact with the property owners and, uh, with several other people that are in the area, uh, that are willing to help us, uh, with easements and making sure that we get drainage going in the correct direction. So, um, that, that is in the works.
And that's gonna include Stevens Road?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Behind the country store?
We have, uh, Stevens Road is gonna take an easement. You know, when Stee- the paved road part goes and dirt road Stevens goes, it turns ninety.
Right.
So, from very close to that ninety, all the way back out, we're gonna need an easement to get that water out to Island's Highway, cause there's nowhere to take that water. And that's kinda part of the problem, is everybody's yard floods, and if you ride out there, there's like three people with sump pumps in their backyard, and they're pumping water onto our paved road to get water out of their backyard, so they can flush their toilets.
That's correct.
But there's, there's nowhere for it to go. So, you know, there's real no... The ditch along Stevens Road is just a pulled ditch for the dirt road, and it doesn't go anywhere. And we're landlocked, so to speak. I can't get to the swamp behind it, and I can't get to the swamp on, not swamp, but the, the ditch on Island's Highway.
Right, you're right.
So, we are just, I think we are almost finished with the surveying on it, cause I gotta know where the property lines are. And I've already just about have an easement on one piece of property that'll get me a third of the way there. So, I'm, I'm making progress on trying to get some relief there. And we also have finished our surveying for, um, trying to get, figure out what to do with the drainage on Island's Highway from the orchard back down to the fire station.
Fire station, okay. Alright.
Yep, those are all underway.
Okay.
So, um, and, and next month, I, I hope to have a little different, uh, status report. We're gonna try to change up the way we do it, and it's gonna list it a little bit better, and it'll be more in bullet points, but it may be a lot longer. Um, we're, we're gonna try it out, see if you guys like it.
Alright, okay.
Try, try to make it a little better, a little easier to get out to you each month, and then it may help you with some things that... Cause I don't put every little thing on the status report, otherwise, we're already here forty-five minutes with me sometimes.
It's not gonna cost anymore, is it?
No, sir. Actually, I hope it costs us less.
Alright.
Yeah. Cause, you know, what happens is now, I end up having to spend a whole bunch of time trying to write it. We're trying to get where it's, it stays up to date every day.
Watch me type up. So, you know, I wrote down, I wrote down that rule with, uh, Commissioner Stevens and Mr. Mosley and who, Bob Dog? The Stevens Road, so, so the, the better way to get that water out is to bring it all the way out to Island's Highway?
Well, I'm gonna have to have two things, actually. So, Island's Highway is gonna cure my, right there at that bend in the road. When I get to the very, very end where it kinda dead ends, I'm gonna have to look at another way to get rid of some of that water. I can't get that water from all the way at the end, all the way back. Cause it's really, it's really all trying to go toward Fort Morse Road.
Right.
Cause all this water runs parallel with Fort Morse Road to the, uh, coast. So, it's all trying to go this way, and so Stevens is just flat.
Yeah.
It's running along the contour and it doesn't have anywhere to go. So, I gotta get it this way at the end, and I gotta get it back to Island's Highway, so I can get rid of something in the elbow.
Right.
Now, one of the things that happened to us, through no fault of anybody's, the people that have started building in those little areas between that bend and Island's Highway, they built their little driveway, and they built it up four or five inches. But that four or five inches is wreaking havoc all the way back up, cause...
Nowhere for it to go.
Nowhere for it to go.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
But, yes, sir. Now, I rode around in the rain with it a lot.
I did too.
Trying to figure out what's going on.
But Trent, and I don't recall, uh, due to two thousand and two, it's been a long, uh, is that, is that report still relevant? Is that the drainage study?
We use it all the time.
Yeah.
I do. I use it all the time. Um, it would not hurt to...
What's our report card?
Say that one more time.
What's our report card on the, how well are we doing following what the study recommends?
Pretty decent. Um... I don't know that I've ever tried to compare what it says we needed to do, cause it's, I mean, it's six volumes of report. So, we don't have like a, uh, master list of we need to do X, Y, Z. In every basin area, there are things that need to get done or need to be fixed. So, generally what happens if, if you come to me and you say, alright, I wanna pave Butter Blunt Road. One thing I do is I go back and I find Butter Blunt Road in that area, and then I, I use it as a foundation for my drainage for Butter Blunt Road. Likewise, when I'm doing other, other drainage improvements, I, I go back and I use it. Now, there's a lot of times I have to go through and say, huh, well, we put a hundred and ten lots in that neighborhood. That, that number's not any good anymore. So, you know, all in all, we fare fairly well. Um, I'll be honest with you, uh... I, I think that our road department has done a great job of keeping our drainage working over the years, because if you look at, um, how we fare as a county, and you compare to Bryan and some of our surrounding counties, uh, we fare really well. Um, as far as roads that are washed out, you know, people that are, uh, inconvenienced, so to speak, we, we really do fare fairly well.
We, we would agree.
You, you hear all the people that are screaming.
Yes, that's what I was hitting. That's what I was hitting next.
But when you, when you take a step back and you look, how does Liberty County compare to my neighboring counties? We, we fare very well.
Yeah, but, but I just wanna follow, I wanna just ensure that we are progressing on the, on the plan. So, and I know we've had unprecedented rain, like last month? Yeah, last month. I understand that. That showed up a lot of...
No rain.
Not a question, but I don't wanna call.
Really? You know, but, but I want us to make sure that our, our drainage plan is, is being worked.
Yes, sir. It, it is, we really do need to start looking at trying to set some money aside sometime in the near future to upgrade it. And there's a lot of new technologies that we can use to make it better. But, you know, it's a pretty good expense.
I know.
I wanna ask you something. Uh, if it goes off the far end, stop.
We'll bring, we'll bring it back.
Alright, so, International Paper's closing Riceboro Mill Down and Savannah, but Savannah's not gonna have an effect on us uh, as far as water. They're gonna get their water at the Savannah River. Riceboro has three wells?
Three wells.
Two wells?
Three.
Three wells? I thought, oh, three wells?
Three wells, yeah.
Uh, they got a permit for twelve million gallons a day.
A day.
But they averaged about nine million gallons a day.
They're not, they're not using their full capacity.
Yeah, my concern with this is, uh, coming from my younger years, when there used to be Artesian wells flowing. When we shut this amount of water down, or they shut it down, that are not us, but they shut down, what's this gonna do to the water table? When we have the cone effect what we had now when it was pumping water, now I think we're gonna have the reverse effect. What the water table, as it's aquifer fields, nobody can answer, I don't believe, when it's gonna take place, but I have asked them educated people. They're giving me a timeline of about two, two and a half years, and we're gonna see problems here in Liberty County with what the water table's gonna be at.
I think...
You're on right track with me. I know you are. Um, we ain't talked about this either till now. Alright, so, do we as commissioners, I think we can, need to do a better job. Do we get LCPC or someone, whoever maybe to look into this and see if we need to up our standards? And all, for some of this residential development stuff is going?
So, how you handle that is, um, if we do upgrade our standards, uh, the one thing we would need to do is add, um, items to our construction standards for our roadways. Uh, right now, we don't end up, we don't use a lot of sock drain, uh, to keep our groundwater down, because our groundwater is usually down far enough that it doesn't bother us. You do see places, Bryan County has a requirement for running sock drain, uh, underneath all their roadways. So, we, we may want to go back and do that. That way we can get rid of that. Now, that has a compounding effect, because then you have a base flow in your storm drain pipes. So, you've got, a lot of times it makes you upsize your storm drain pipes, cause you've got a base flow. Get a little too technical on that, but, uh, that is something that, uh, we are gonna have to contend with, and it is gonna be a, a changing, uh, thing, especially when we start talking about stormwater ponds and, uh, you know, when our residents wanna build a pool or anything that is likely to float, we're gonna have a, a lot more problems with that. So, you know, you're not gonna be able to just drain your pool and clean it, cause that pool's gonna float.
So, you, you agree it is a concern? None of us can't answer how big a concern just yet, but it's a possibility.
Here's the other question. We all know about our water capacity and being able to ground, use groundwater for drinking water. So, with closing of this plants, does that release about thirty million gallons a day in our area? And what does EPD do with that distribution of that water?
But that's being addressed.
Yes, that's gonna be very interesting how that happens, and actually, Joseph and I are going to a seminar in October, and we're hoping that they're gonna discuss some of that. So, I don't know what's gonna happen, but that's gonna be interesting to see what happens. We have some interesting times coming up.
Several inquiries slash approaches to what might happen with the, uh, water drill and what EPD might would approve. Uh, I, I mean, told, their process is their process. They don't differ from their process, so...
And they control the water.
So, they have several in the south, they're suitors, you know? But it's, it's a wait and see, as to what's gonna happen. Then there are some, I, I'll go and say this. There are some people who are, who are looking into perhaps purchasing, you know, the site. And I'm not sure how the, how the, the water part, it's into that.
Yeah, what, how does that, do they purchase that and they purchase the permit that goes with it?
So, there's a lot, there's a lot in the air, up in the air right now, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna be interesting to see how it goes.
And, and I'm kinda like, Commissioner Blunt, I don't wanna ring a, a bell of alarm, but if there's something we can tell citizens, um, at this stage, then we need to be, uh, proactive with some kind of statement, because...
Well, let's, let's have some conversations in the coming months about things we need to change in our standards. Uh, that way we can make sure that we take care of that.
There's the rain. Alright, alright. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Y'all have a great night.
You too. From water to food. Hello there, Ms. James.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Wrapping up the summer food program, um, we had an improvement this year with an increase of over about nine hundred meals from last year.
Wow.
We expanded into Airport Road, which was an area that was underserved with no sites. And that was pretty much our biggest site, uh, this year. Yeah, we had nobody out there. Um, Councilman Newby volunteered and, and served out, out that site.
And it wound up being your heavy volume site?
Yes, that was, that was the largest, that and Harbor Range. Those were the two largest sites, and we still, um, we still have some underserved areas that we are trying to, to expand into. I wanna give a thank you to Mr. White and Pastor, Pastor Murray at Fellowship of Love for accommodating us, because I believe we have outgrown that area now, so, um, due to the improvement and the increase in numbers. We served for forty-two days. We served over eighteen... We served for forty-two days. We served over eighteen thousand meals this year. That was an increase of about a thousand from last year.
And most of the increase came from the Airport Road site?
It came from the Airport Road site and we had an increase of church and camp, um, groups that visited a lot of the outdoor sites. Those were the main increases. And it was after the second week in July that we saw those increases. Yeah, so to go for next year, hopefully we can, um, move into the midway complex and expand to more sites. Because we, we had a couple of, um, organizations and companies reach out to us to, to proceed for next year.
Wait, uh, you said, uh, uh, Councilman Newby volunteered to serve the?
He did. He was out there every day with his organization, his group, and they, um, they served. They got letters from the, letters from the kids, you know, thanking them for all the meals they served. And, 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 yeah, they, they already agreed to go forward for next year as well.
Uh, Mr. Moser has there, uh, I'm, I'm thinking all the things that are going on in DC when it comes to we totally county funded, still some federal funds.
We, we get the money from state, uh, Neshia, what's the name of the organization?
Um, Decal.
Decal.
And Happy Helpings is the, uh, actual grant.
And that's, you expect that funding to continue, as far as you know?
As far as we know, yeah, yeah. We did good this year. We was under the radar, but so far so good for next year. They still have an ongoing training, so as of now, everything looks good for next year.
And you coming back next year?
Yes. Yes.
Doing a good job.
Yes, yes.
That's a good thing.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
What's, what's the program in over in Savannah? Something Harvest?
Second Harvest.
Second Harvest.
Have you reached out to them?
I reached out to them last year and at that time it was too late. Going forward this year, I didn't because we, um, it was changed to, to self prepare. And with the changes that being made, it is, um, more feasible and economical for us to, to proceed as, um, as self prep.
Okay.
And I believe ours are a better nutritional packed meal.
Yeah.
I, I, I have that product, but from what I've seen and heard.
What I've heard.
Okay.
Heard, ours is, you keep doing what you do.
Yes, ma'am.
There you go. Alright.
Thank y'all. Good night.
Thank you, thank you.
Don't get wet. Mr. Russell. Grant that, this is the, the grant writer for the Sheriff's Department. He's bringing the, they want to, uh, submit.
Uh, yes, sir. The, uh, Liberty County Sheriff's Office awarded a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinator Council, uh, for Project Safe Neighborhoods for a total of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars. This equipment will be used to purchase a Redcon Core VR Training System. Um, it's gonna address a sharp rise in our youth involved violent threats and firearm related incidents within Liberty County, uh, especially the, uh, middle schools. The system will enhance both law enforcement training and community education targeting youth violence, gang, gang influence and gang related threats. Uh, it offers over nine hundred branches of scenarios that will be, um, integrated into existing outreach efforts, including Champs Youth Academy and Citizen Academy. It's gonna enhance officer readiness, enhance officer readiness, uh, educate students and families on real life consequences of gun violence, gang activities and unsafe decisions. Um, it's also gonna aid in building community trust, um, and transparency within the sheriff's office and the community. Um, and he'll, and help promote responsible gun ownership through simulations focused on secure firearm storage and threat prevention. Um, I just need your, um, permission to accept this grant, um, and the chairman's signature on the documents that I've given him before.
So it's a preventive measure? Am I using the right terminology?
Yes, sir.
Grants are preventive, okay.
Mr. Chairman, there's no matching?
No, ma'am.
No matching, no matching.
Oh, ma'am.
And Ms. Samantha, is that something you handle or is that go straight to?
Yes, I work with, uh, Ms. Heather, um, with finance with this when it goes to requesting the information, I mean, requesting that equipment, so.
Okay. Is it some, is this a grant that may be already in place and you're just renewing?
No, this is a new grant.
Brand new, okay.
Yes.
It's a new grant, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Chair and Taylor motion?
Yes, sir. I'd make a motion. We approve, oh, did you have? That we would approve the Project Safe Neighborhood Program grant?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Sure, in a second, we approve the application for the grant with the caveat that, that answers yes.
Yes, sir.
No pressure, no pressure, no pressure.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? All the favors your hands, please. Alright.
Alright.
When, when is the, uh, notification?
Uh, we already, um, that was the grant, we received the grant award already. Uh, we just have to accept it.
Oh, okay, this is acceptance.
Yes, sir.
Alright, alright. Okay, thank you. Good work.
Thanks.
He's been successful at doing that, man. Animal Control?
Uh, this is, uh, our intergovernment agreement that we're working with the city of Heinzville on. As I mentioned to you, this is a, uh, um, IGA that, uh, basically spans two years. With the first year, uh, being, um, a review period and then have an automatic renewal. In this agreement, the county agrees to provide, uh, services that won't enhance services. So what that means is we'll provide services for, uh, city of Heinzville, um, on Saturday and Sunday as well as after hours. And then what we did in refining the document is we established protocols in terms of when the, when the officers will respond. So a law enforcement is a protocol, um, uh, dangerous dog is a, is a protocol and injured, injured animals are protocols. Um, and in that process, the city agrees to provide us, uh, fifty thousand dollars. And what I discussed with Mr. Marrero, instead of waiting to after the end of the year, that one year period is at the six months period that we would actually start, uh, we would track it. And, um, any concerns we have at six months, start initiating those concerns to the city. Because at the, end of the year, we'll be in between cycles. So I, I want, we wanna have those discussions early. Uh, and one of the concerns when, when Mr. Brown was talking to Mr. Howard last year was space. And, and we, uh, as I shared with you earlier, we have some kennels coming in, uh, that were donated and that will be able to address that issue. And that's one of the things that we were really concerned about is when we start responding at a higher level, when we start bringing in more animals, how would that impact our operations? And so we will have new kennels. But again, that's something we'll be tracking and we will make that known to the city. We might need some more money, uh, to, to address these issues. Vehicles, I think, uh, for the weekend, that, that person will solely have a vehicle, but they may have to share a vehicle during the day, Steve. And, um, y'all are asking a couple of things, uh, is staff taking home, uh, um, staff taking vehicles home? Only on staff, people are taking home vehicles. And, uh, what calls, again, what I'd share with you earlier in terms of the protocol, dangerous animals, that sort of things, those things are spelled out in the IGA. Any questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'll invite Mr. Marrero up here. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moser, on, on the second page, uh, definitions, where it says, uh, animal control services included, but not limited to domestic animals?
Yes, sir.
Would that, that's not, um, like if someone had, uh, some possums or something out there that you could call?
I wouldn't think of possums.
No, sir. No, sir, we wouldn't respond to possums.
But, but, um, so what?
That's DNR.
It said not, not limited to. So what, what would be other than cats and dogs?
Rabbits.
Rabbits?
Other domesticated animals, um, labeled as domesticated.
Pet box trick.
So there is a labeling of what's a domesticated animal?
Yeah, well, what I think of, I think of cats and dogs, but.
No, sir. I mean, there is other labels. I mean, as we've found out in, uh, the last few months, there's domesticated pigs.
Yeah, that's right.
And there's other things that are labeled as domesticated.
Okay. I didn't think about pigs, yeah. Yeah. A day in the life of an animal control officer.
So, so, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. No, I mean, I mean, y'all, y'all wouldn't, um, and I think Joe, you said, um, the services for the city of Heinzville, it's like Saturdays and Sundays?
Yes, sir.
That's, um, doing normal working hours on weekends or twenty-four hours a day on the weekends?
Yes, sir.
And so Heinzville won't get any service during the week? Is it just?
Oh, no, that's in addition to. So it's seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week, around the clock. Yes, sir.
Wow. Yeah, they hadn't been the weekend coverage, so this fills that gap, am I right?
Weekend coverage is on call, so it has to be, um, either injured or vicious. So now this covers daytime and evening.
Filling that gap, I call it.
Yes, sir.
You good?
What about the, the other municipalities? Never mind.
As far as counties or cities?
Right, in, in the county. Cause I, I guess the question I have is, you know, and I, I understand why we're doing it for the city of Heinzville. But say for instance, I live in Gun Branch, do they, do, do they service those calls or?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, we service everywhere, from one part of the county to the other.
That's a service to the county.
Okay.
After hours, do services?
Absolutely, from one part of the county to the other.
Yeah. Part of ours.
We got a huge job on a limited budget.
Avalorment covers that.
That's what he asked.
But we pay, we, last time I checked, my tax, uh, okay, nevermind. I live in Heinzville.
I know.
I look at my taxes. I, I thought I paid for that. But, carry on.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, do you need a motion for that?
I do. Chair and Taylor motion?
Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the IGA Animal Control Services for the city of Heinzville. Intergovernment agreement to provide services on the weekends and evenings.
Services.
May, sir?
Enhanced services.
Enhanced services, I'm sorry.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. I know, Commissioner, I know you've been kinda hearing about this, so.
Oh, yeah.
So hopefully this will take care of it. Like Mr. Moser said, we'll come back in six months and re-review and see where we are, assess, see where we are.
Hey, I'm sorry. Who made a second?
I did.
Any further discussion? All the favors your hands, please.
When, when does it start, Mr. Chairman?
That's a good, that's a good question. Effective when?
I think we were, we talked about it anyway. It would probably, probably.
Soon as the rain stopped, probably.
Realistically, we would have to hire a person. Um, so we would have to go through the process. We were looking at about ninety days, um, something that, and I would be pushing it, um, hoping that we would find someone. And, so.
Now, as a if, if you don't find anyone, what do you do then?
And that's where the timeline is, uh, we would have to just do the services until we do find them.
Okay.
We would have to suck up that time.
So Heinzville didn't ask for, I'm sorry, a, a effective whatever date thing? Okay, okay.
That's, so, so, so actually that could be one of those cases where you do more with less.
Yes, sir.
You think it'll be difficult in finding someone?
Being optimistic, sir? No.
Okay, okay, alright.
I think we can.
Think you can?
I think we can.
Alright. I'm sure Ms. Laura will put that ad out ASAP. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Speaking of Ms. Laura, she's coming forward to talk about personnel rules and regulations. That's one of the items that Mr. Moser covered with us in the work session, for those of you who are able to make it.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here to request adoption of a portion of our personnel policy. We are in the process of updating the whole thing, but this is in particular Section twelve that relates to attendance and leave. And there've been so many updates over the years that need to be addressed and be put into adoption. And yes, we did review it, uh, recently, but just as an overview, um, you can see the Section twelve contents. There's a list of them on your screen. Um, so it talks about paid time, unpaid time off, timekeeping. You know, we have the new paylocity system. We have, uh, twenty-four hour personnel these days that deal with a lot of time and attendance records. Oh, thank you.
Oh, I didn't know it worked that way.
The screen went out.
Right, but you can see it on your screen.
Yes, right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so as I started on the summary of changes, it has to do with, you know, standing up our fire services, taking over EMS. Those are all twenty-four hour personnel, which is brand new. And there was various language that we had to add for those changes. And also, like I mentioned, uh, with paylocity, we need to reflect our current timekeeping processes. For clarity, we wanted to detail, uh, procedures for workers' comp, military leave and family and medical leave. For, to guide employees as well as supervisors on how to comply with those laws. Also, we talked about administrative leave for office closures. We added some sections in there and incorporated the, uh, former appendix regarding emergency leave, which is during declared disasters. Leave payout, we clarified the maximum annual leave payout or carryover at the user lose time to two hundred and forty hours. Uh, there were some, uh, ways to misinterpret that in the policy, so that needed clarification. There's also been some new laws as far as pregnant employees or nursing employees, so we needed to update that section. And finally, uh, we closed the pension plan in twenty seventeen, and so there is no more bridging of time. And so we updated that section. We still allow bridge time when former employees come back to work for the county. We can bridge their time for leave accrual, but just not for, you know, years of service for the pension. And we worked on updating, uh, well, just improving the formatting and the flow of the document. Okay. So over the past several months, we have had it reviewed by all of our department heads under the board as well as it was vetted by our labor attorney, Doug Dewar. And so now we have the final version for you to adopt tonight as we continue to work in the background on the rest of the personnel policy, which we hope to bring to you at the first of the year. Any questions?
Are you, you gonna bring the rest?
Right, cause there are actually sixteen sections plus some appendices.
You didn't wanna overload us with?
Well, this was the most important and is the largest single section in the policy itself.
And this is staff recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Any question for Ms. Laura, Ms. Moser, before we move on this?
Do we have to vote on it?
Some cleaning up and some clarifications and some, uh, revisions.
You need to adopt it as policy of the board in all of your departments.
I'm saying it cause it's my first time seeing it.
He brought us in the work session.
In the work session.
Okay.
Yeah, in the work session.
Yeah, I didn't pay that much. I got a question, Laura.
Sure.
If an employee retires, how long before they can return to the county to do contract work with the county?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
The word was a while back that if you retire, you had to wait six months before you can come back and do, uh, do a contract with the county, to do any kind of work with the county.
Well, that's the.
He means contract.
Right, yeah.
Well, you can come back as an employee in six months, but your intention can't be that you would return. Um, but an independent contractor, if you're a business, you can. You can come back and do work for the county right away.
So that's the loophole.
If you're a business, you can come right back, but if you're an employee, okay.
Alright, okay.
With, and you have to wait at least six months if you wanna come back full time or part time, but people could. As long as there's no intention when they retire to say, oh, I'm gonna come back in six months full time.
Okay.
So that's the message we've had to send to some people, that you can't have that plan in mind.
Okay.
The other part of that was, as a consultant, we could not be your primary, um,
Source.
Source. It had to be, you had to have other contracts.
Okay.
Right, that's what I mean as a business, that you're doing this for multiple entities, multiple clients.
Well, Mr. Chairman, is, I mean, is there an issue with someone retiring and coming back? I mean, that you have to put a, a time, is, I mean, there's an issue with that?
There is, it's an IRS rule, they consider it a fraudulent retirement if you retire and then turn around and come back, which means you're collecting your retirement and collecting a paycheck at the same time. And so if we allow violations of that to occur, we could jeopardize the tax, the taxation of our pension plan.
No, I wouldn't, last thing I want to do is jeopardize anything, but I was just thinking if, if a department, if somebody retired and they were in dire need of help.
Bad expertise.
And the expertise, but, but, if he retired in June, it'd be sometime in January before he could come back and help. And you need the help and the expertise, because a person that's been around for twenty years, you, you could replace him, but the twenty years of institutional knowledge is not going to be there, but if that's the IRS, if whoever IRS is, if that's the way they want it, then I guess.
That's way bigger than us.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Business, she said. Come back as a business, then get you around the IRS rule, LLC, baby.
Yep.
Okay, all right, chair, entertain the motion then.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Motion second, we approve Section twelve revisions that's presented by HR and the staff, any further discussion? Thank you for the education on how that works.
You're welcome.
All in favor, show your hands, please. Poses. You said don't leave?
Don't leave. Chairman, I wanted Laura to brief you up on some health, on some health fair issues that are, not issues, but announcements.
Our plan. Well, you may have all received a notification today through paylocity. We announced our upcoming health fair, as you know, every fall, we have a, a large health fair for all employees. It's our anchor event of the Employee Wellness Program called Live Well. And so that will be held October twenty-second, twenty-third, and twenty-fourth. And we have a sign-up going around, and you all are welcome to attend, we'll have our, our top partner, Liberty Regional Medical Center, who are providing biometric screenings, as well as some other blood work for participants. We have Hinesville Pharmacy coming for the immunization clinic. And then we'll have a variety of other booths and partners throughout the community, as well as some of our internal departments, who will just provide, you know, a variety of important screenings and health information to our employees as they come through. And there'll be giveaways and things to incentivize people to participate, to invest in themselves and their health.
Health as well.
You want to talk about the, the safety grant you all just were awarded between your office and?
That was really for Bob Dodd.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't.
Chip, very quickly, come.
Oh, yes, Chip is here, one thing I did want to mention about the health fair, for the first time, we are partnering with the Liberty County Youth Commission on the topic of social wellness, and they will have a booth there collecting items for their charity project.
Mr. Chairman, before Laura leaves, I have one question, and I think I sent Mr. Mosley an email over the week. Do we have an incentive program, let's say you have a guy that's a laborer, whatever that position is called, and he goes out on his own and gets a CDL license, do we have an incentive program where, you know, for that certification, that he would get an increase in pay?
Currently, we do not.
Okay.
He would be eligible, he or she would be eligible for internal promotion at a faster rate. The only increase we currently have is if you're hired for CDL and you get an endorsement for hazmat, you receive a one-step increase.
Okay, so, but we don't have an incentive program, I guess.
We don't.
Okay, that's something, Mr. Chairman, that we probably do need to discuss. I mean, you get a guy that's, you know, a young guy out of high school, and he comes to work there and, you know, he wants to move up and in his own time.
Right.
He studies and he goes and get some equipment certifications, or he gets some, a CDL license, or anything else pertinent to that job, you know, I think it should be, he should be rewarded for that. That's just my thought.
For your organization, what do you do?
We reward them for that, that's.
With how much?
Well, if you, if you're a laborer and you go get a CDL, we give you a dollar.
Okay.
Even if he stays a laborer, now he's driving?
Well, I mean, he, he wouldn't, he's a, he may not get a promotion, but he will get a pay increase because he has that license. And, and eventually, the regular truck driver is out.
He would.
He can fill in.
Yeah.
You, you don't necessarily have to promote him, you need to reward him for, for his certifications. And, and we have several certifications, we have pesticide for spraying mosquitoes. You don't necessarily, you will get an increase in pay for that. We have herbicide for spraying, you know, along the rightways. We got a water and sewer, water, wastewater. I mean, you could get all of those certifications, and you make yourself more valuable, I mean, to yourself and to the company, or in this case, to the county. This is something that we need to look at, even our mechanics, they have ASC certifications, and there's a long list of that. Now, you don't get a dollar for, for all twenty of them, but you know, we do look at what it brings to the table, and we just want to reward attendance. And if we don't have that program, I think that that's something that we could look at maybe in our next workshop. I could bring, you know, what we're using, and, you know, we could try to narrow that.
With the salary survey, pick that up the next time that happens, that this person has increased credentials or strictly related to his job?
No, sir.
Related to their job.
No, but, but you got to figure.
That would be something we could, we could do.
You, you got to figure the salary survey, I mean, let's say you got eighty employees. Sometime during the year, you're gonna be down to seventy-five before you get back up to eighty, so, you know, the money will be there, and we're not talking about a whole lot of money. I mean, a dollar's two thousand eighty hours, fifty cents is half of that. A quarter for a certification, I just think that it would encourage somebody to, if you're gonna make a career out of public works, you should be able to, to better yourself.
Bring your, bring your information, let's look.
I will.
Because I know there are some other departments that has, we've talked about in the past, that has, people have.
Even Laura's department may have a way to get the certification.
I remember some, but let's compare those.
In, in certain departments, like in, for instance, in property appraisers.
Yes, yeah, I know there one.
When, when they do, when they get certification, they do go up, and if that's an area, for instance, in public works that we want to incentivize, I mean, that's something we could look at more in details in that particular area.
Yeah, I think we need to look at it, because to be honest with you, if we don't incentivize them, I know if I worked public works and I went out and got my CDL by myself, and I didn't get no type of compensation, I'm gone.
Well, he's in, he or she's in demand, so they will probably be able to get us a, a job.
Somewhere else.
Driving, yeah.
Well, and another, another thing that we do, if someone wants to get a certification, we will pay the first time, and let's say if they, if they don't pass, you know, then, you know, we won't pay for the second one, but if they finally get it, then we reimburse them for the, for the one that they passed. The first one is, is on the company, and if they, if it's a couple tries and then they, they get it, whenever they do get it, we'll reimburse them. But I'll bring on, we'll discuss, I just think it's something that a bit with everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Laura, very quickly, sir.
Oh, very quick, so every year we do, we do a safety grant through ACCG that's based on a safety review board that we do quarterly, so we look at trends throughout the county on safety issues, and every year, based on those trends, we order equipment that can help mitigate some of those safety, not violations, but first port of injuries or traffic violations. And this year, we rewarded eight thousand four hundred and something dollars, that's based on the employees that we have with the county, but that's your ACCG.
Thank you, sir, congratulations.
Chip does a good job with the drivers, what's the name of our program?
Driver training.
Driver training, he does a great job. Mr. Chair, a couple things quickly, one of the projects that we wanted to bring up to you guys, but we were trying to vet and make sure everything was, was going well, and we didn't get any information until today. And that is Crystal had a ride-along program agreement with the sixty-eight W Combat Medics, and basically, it's a ride-along, ride-along program, and we was really trying to work with Bob Seville, and today he did sign off on it, so you do have it in your packet. And we would encourage you to approve this memorandum of understanding with, Crystal, if you come and provide details. They have done it before, and they would like to do it again to help out the army.
Good evening, so this is, I believe, we're gonna be our second time that we would host a unit from the military to our service department, and it was successful before, and we are actually in negotiations with an additional unit at this time to possibly bring that forward with another additional MOU later on, well, in the near future. This is something that has been very successful, it allows us to work alongside those in the military when they're not deployed, so that they can kind of keep up on their skills. Takeaway notes are, they would not be active in the actual patient care, they would be performing the bedside interviews, the patient care vital signs, kind of in theory, like your Boy Scout, your first aid, things like that. They would not be doing any advanced cares in the field with us, and they are protected under their own liability and HIPAA and whatnot. So if you have any questions.
Yeah, my question, liability, so, all right, and you're gonna try for two units now?
We're currently pursuing this particular one, and I'm in negotiations right now with another unit from, from there that we're working out the details for the, for that MOU to bring forward later.
You need our approval, Mr.?
I do, I would like your approval, I would also like to note that our orientation employees, our new hire employees, as well as our students that are affiliated with our contracted MOUs that we have with the technical colleges, they, of course, would take priority over scheduling and whatnot, because we don't want to, obviously, we can't put a whole bunch of people in our, in our ambulances at one time, so those would take precedence over bringing in our military for their experience and exposure.
But it's a good affiliation, I like it.
Thank you.
It's good for the community, chair, entertain the motion then.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion second, we approve the memorandum agreement between Liberty County EMS and two A, B, C, T, I know that something, they don't say it that way, but that's what it's written out here. All right, all right, any further discussion, all in favor, show your hands, please. All right, when will it start, Crystal?
Just as soon as we get the signatures and send it off to them, and then we'll start scheduling.
Well, I'm sure someone will bring it for me to sign, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chair, kind of following along with Crystal, back in, back in April, we had one of our ambulances to our rec, guy created it, and we had two witnesses, and they have provided reports. We've kind of been at a standstill, and we're gonna meet with some officials from VFIS tomorrow to see if we can bring some resolution, Commissioner Stephen had asked me what was the status of it, and it's been ongoing issue for, well, ever since April. I mean, we've just been going around and around and around. We purchased the chassis with the hopes of taking the mount, taking the cabinet off of the rec unit, because cabinet was in pretty good shape and mounted on the new one, but with the potential of a lawsuit, they have just been holding things up. So hopefully tomorrow, we can get some resolution on it. I just want to bring y'all up to date on it, the last thing I want to share with you is Clinton sent me an email on Monday, and he shared his concerns when the city of Flemington signed the agreement with Atlantic to collect waste. It was a franchise agreement, and essentially, it froze us out on the commercial side of, of, of collection. You'll notice a memo there that I provided to you, we're looking at deposits of forty, losing forty-two hundred dollars that we have to refund. Our residential second cart of six thousand six thirty-seven, but really, what hits us is on the business dumpsters, which will lose an annual amount of fifty-eight thousand eight twenty-four. Yesterday, in a conversation with one of the council members, she said, Joseph, bring, bring the issue back to us, and so we're going to, staff, we're gonna get together and discuss some numbers and try to go back to them, asking them to help us out on that endeavor. And the second part of that is, our last collection is December twenty-sixth, and what we want to do is get together, staff, and try to work with Atlantic to phase, phase us out and get them in. We got about eight hundred poly carts to pick up, I don't know how many dumpsters we got to pick up and try to get out, so they can put their stuff in, so that we can make the transition as smooth as possible for all the customers in Flemington.
Mr. Mosley, where we're gonna store all the stuff?
That's a question, sir, that, that we have concerns, I don't know at this point, one of the areas mentioned was the old landfill. I was told that out of the seven hundred poly carts, about four hundred are in good condition, the rest of them are, you know, they've been kind of fixed and repaired and things along those lines, but right now, I was shared, I was told that possibly the old landfill would be the area now that we'll be looking at.
So, Mr. Mosley.
Yes, sir.
So Atlantic Waste is gonna be, take care of all of their solid waste for the city of Flemington. Not only, because I know household was the part that I thought was kind of giving us some heartburn, but, you know.
It was, and, and the concern was that on the commercial side is when, when Coberson did the study, those funds that we were taking for the commercial was being put in our CIP to help us in future operations with sanitation, so that, you know, you're talking fifty or sixty thousand dollars that now will be.
That we won't get.
We won't receive.
Okay. But you go, you say you're gonna go back and revisit that with them?
Yes, sir, with the conversation I had with one of the council members yesterday, it sounded promising, I don't know how, how it will go, but it did sound promising, so we're gonna meet together, staff, and go back and approach the city of Flemington.
I happened to talk with, I'm sorry, Commissioner, with one of the councilmen yesterday, happened to run into them, and they also spoke that they're gonna do whatever they can to try to revise that, so fingers crossed.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering with, how many poly carts do we currently serve? Is it just ones out in the long reach?
About one in the long reach.
We should get out of it completely and just let, let those folks go privatize, that's what a lot of people in the unincorporated area are doing.
So, talking to Lori, it was the area in Flemington, and then the area in Midway and Riceboro, she shared that we were collecting on the, on the residential side.
In the unincorporated, we don't necessarily go into the city.
Well.
Well.
No, no, city of Midway has their own and Riceboro.
Well, I guess it'll be the unincorporated areas around there.
Contract.
They got their own contracts, I wonder how many, how many customers we actually have, that the county has.
I'm not sure, ma'am.
If we should continue on.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, we can find that out, the report that was brought to us was.
Coberson study.
The non-profitable slash problematic section was the Flemington section. I think, I seem to remember that everything else was revenue-producing.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we can confirm that, yeah.
I'm sure this was with the businesses that are there, is where I think it's gonna hit us the hardest, with the businesses.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
With those dumpsters.
It's, y'all are well aware, from the Coberson study, we, nobody really makes money off of the residential side unless they jack up the, I mean, jack the price up substantially, it's on the commercial side, and I think Commissioner Fraser during the study was really pointing it out that we really need to increase the funds for the commercial side, but that's really where, where the funds are, you make money off of solid waste collection. Yes, ma'am.
Well, Plan A is, you know, see what happens with Flemington and.
Yes, ma'am.
We negotiate the contract, in the meantime, if you and the staff at Solid Waste, we kind of get together with the, well, Samantha, it's just a matter of having to amend the budget, the solid waste budget. Unless there's some other way they can discover that will help us to make up the difference, you know, on the revenue side. I'm not sure what, underestimate what Clinton Wells can do, he and his team, but bring, bring us back some kind of a recommendation.
Yes, sir, we will.
Mr. Chair, just real quick, so with the city of Flemington, were we receiving tipping fees? Were they, were they using our?
Yes, sir, we.
So we're gonna lose that too?
No, that was part of the discussion with Mayor Pro Tim, it was that he was maintaining that they, they do dump, they dump their trash.
But trust will verify, because I know for, for a fact that City of Waterville, they don't use us anymore, and they're using the same company. So I'm not the smartest guy in the world, I promise you I'm not, but.
You're not?
Nah, I've met a lot more smarter people.
Nah, I've met a lot more smarter people.
But supposedly, that was part of the contract, they had to dump Liberty County's.
But, yeah, but just try to make sure that, and Ms. Chair, that might be something that we might want to discuss with other municipalities, because just like Commissioner Thrift said, most people are going private now, but if they do go private, they'll at least try to see if the companies that they use will still use our facilities, because if not, I mean, why do we have them? If we're getting out of business, we're definitely about to get out of the business all the way. That's the only thing. So, I guess just check.
I would certainly hope that a thorough study, after a thorough study has been done, that fifty-eight thousand dollars would not break the bank on us being in the trash business. If the margin of profit was that low, then you're right, we don't need to be in there.
Yeah.
So, let's...
The Coberson study is for how many years? Five? Five, seven? So, it would be another five years before we can revisit.
And then, there may be some opportunities to gain some other commercial customers, so, once again, I, you know...
Yes, sir, so, we're gonna huddle together and discuss strategies.
I got a plan for it, to be able to get some more commercial.
And last thing, Chairman, is Ms. Hunter and I visit with the architect and the contractors at the Health Department. They said that the building exterior will be completed by December, and they're gonna really work hard to have us a new facility in the new year. So, we're excited about that.
Chairman, I have one question for you. How about the EMS building? I didn't ask Trip, but is it coming along?
Yes, coming along.
It is, uh...
She's got beams up now.
You got, okay, I got to ride by.
She's got beams up now.
All right, we're going vertical now.
I saw her dangling from them the other day.
Ms. Chairman, just before we leave, I would want to just kind of go back to the animal control contract. We do need to know if, you know, when the city of Heinzville expect for us to start that, and I know Mr. Marrero said that we got to hire somebody, but the bottom line is, if we have that contract, they're gonna expect those services. So, let's say you hire somebody next week or next month, and then after a while, that person leaves, they still gonna want that service, that's what they're paying for. It's up to us to meet the terms of that contract, you know, so whether we hire somebody or don't, if that contract's supposed to start the first of November, we got to be ready. Whether we got the right staff or not, we just gonna have to do something, because for fifty thousand dollars, they want that service. And you ain't gonna be able to tell them that, hey, we ain't got nobody. Not if you got a contract, you got to get somebody.
Mr. Chair, can I get with the city manager and negotiate a time for it to be implemented?
Yeah, sure.
Well, if you ever been over there when they talking about it, they wanted it yesterday. Yeah. But you ain't gonna be able to say, well, hey, we, you know, we ain't got nobody. And certainly, don't want to overcommit something that we can't, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, good, sir.
And Ms. Chair?
Mr. Mosley? Ms. Chairman, I'd sent an email the other day asking for some information, some contracts.
Yes, sir.
Are they in the works?
They will be, sir.
Okay.
I was told that we'd have them, so we got to do some research.
I don't want to say we have them, I want to see them.
Yes, sir, we'll do the research.
Because I'm quite sure they outdate.
Ms. Chair, just real quick, earlier this week, myself and the rest of the ACCG Policy Council met with, it was a joint meeting with GMA about some of the concerns that's going to come down the pipeline for under the Gold Dome next year. Just to, I don't know if you want me to do it now, or I could do it next meeting, just give a quick update.
We were trying to be out by seven, so if you don't have to do it...
Hey, I'm fine with that, because normally, it's like Amy Church in here, alone.
Wait a minute.
I kid, I kid. But, yeah, that's totally fine, I could do it next, but more importantly...
In the meantime, can you have it as an email to us?
I could do that too, but I think Commissioner Stevens, you're the voting delegate, right? All right, so I do need to get with you before the next conference, so... Just the week after, I think, right, so...
Yes, sir, please do.
Right, it's some...
But didn't get it to us beforehand?
Yeah, because, and again, if we want to have a discussion with our state reps, we need to do that like yesterday, because it's gonna be a very, very short session this year. It's election year, and you know everybody's running for office, so...
Yes, sir, yeah. All right, thank you, sir. All good for the order, Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All good for all the commissioners? His motion is their second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, show your hands, we stand adjourned, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.